Good evening. I'm sorry there has been such difficulty getting up and running this evening. So, but I do want to welcome everyone on behalf of the League of Women Voters of Tacoma Pierce County. Welcome to the Primary Election Candidate Forum with candidates running for Stillicum Town Council District 2. My name is Liz Knox and I will be your moderator this evening. And also with us is Teri Baker who will be the timer. And candidates, just so you know, you can see the timer in Teri Baker's window that you can probably see on your screen and also up at the top of your screen. That's where you will see the timer because you will have some timing for your responses and you'll need to keep track of the timer. So, the League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan organization that encourages the informed and active participation of citizens in government. Our mission is defending democracy and empowering voters. We hold candidate forums as a service to the public to provide voters with an opportunity to compare and contrast candidates for casting their votes. The League also influences public policy through education and advocacy. The League is open to any person aged sixteen and older who subscribes to the purpose and policies of the League and includes men as well as women. Before we begin the opening statements and questions, I will give our land acknowledgement. The League of Women Voters of Tacoma Pierce County wishes to acknowledge that we gather on the ancestral lands of the Coast Salish people. We are surrounded by their traditional waters in the shadow of Mount Tacoma. We actively seek inclusive and respectful partnerships that honor indigenous cultures, histories, identities, and current realities. The Stillicum City Council candidates for position two in ballot order are Cindy Haverkamp, Paul P.K. Thumby, and Andrew Davis. The candidates have been given ground rules in advance which include, among other provisions, that they will adhere to the rules of common courtesy and will not comment on the other candidates but will focus on the issues and that there will be no additional recordings made of this forum. Could you please confirm with a thumbs up or a nod that each of you has agreed to our ground rules? Thank you. As a reminder also to the candidates, please keep your microphone muted when it is not your turn to speak. So, for the public who are listening, if you have questions for the candidates, you may text them to this number, 425-765-5388. Once again, that number is 425-765-5388. Questions must be directed to all candidates and may be consolidated or reworded. Candidates will be timed as they answer and may finish short sentences once the timer stops, but may not continue to speak after that. All candidates will be asked the same questions and have the same amount of time to answer. And we've already talked about the timer. Our timer tonight is Teri Baker and we'll be following her lead on the timing of the questions. So, let's begin. The candidates for Stillicum Council District 2 again are in ballot order Cindy Haverkamp, Paul P.K. Thumby, and Andrew Davis. Each candidate will give an opening statement of up to two minutes. At the end, the candidate will give closing statements of up to one minute. Now, we'll start with Cindy Haverkamp who will give an opening statement. So Cindy, please go ahead with your opening statement.
Hello, everybody. My name's Cindy Haverkamp. I use she/her pronouns and I am a resident of Stillicum. I am a proven leader with many years of experience serving the Stillicum and Pierce County community. My goal is to work for you. The town of Stillicum offers so much to us with its rich historic and cultural heritage, its unmatched natural beauty, and its friendly neighborliness of a small town. As a town council member, I will offer my time and skills to preserve our way of life and give back to the community that has given so much to me. I'm an experienced educator in the Stillicum School District and others and a public servant working for both Pierce County and the Tacoma Pierce County Health Department as well as serving on many different volunteer agencies. And as such, I will leverage my strengths of being good listener, asking good questions, and maintaining positive balanced perspectives as I consider the needs of our town. My work and volunteer experiences have taught me to consider all points of view carefully and to work toward good governance and full transparency. I bring energy and enthusiasm to everything I do. My training in organizational leadership, nonprofit policy and advocacy, and community education will add valuable skill sets to the town council team. If elected, I will promote and protect what is important to those who live in Stillicum: public safety, responsive public services, sound infrastructure, and thoughtful economic and residential growth. I will work hard to earn your support and your vote. Thank you.
Thank you Cindy. And now we will go to P.K. Thumby. And P.K., I don't know if you heard or not because I know there was some trouble getting into the panelist position. And so, just so you know, there is a timer up in the corner of Teri Baker's screen and also up on the corner of the entire screen. And for your introductory opening statement, you will have two minutes. So, let's go ahead and, P.K., if you could go ahead and give your opening statement. Oh, hold on a second, Teri's.
Can you see me? I see you, yes, but I don't know whether you see me.
Okay. We cannot see you, P.K., but we can hear you. So, why don't you go with your opening statement for two minutes?
Okay, thank you and welcome everyone. Thank you so much, the League of Women Voters, for giving us an opportunity to this forum. So, my name is P.K. Thumby. I have lived in the community for more than eighty years now. I'm very active within the community. As for my personal life, I work as a mentor, as an institution counselor with the state's behavioral health administrations, Stillicum Unit. That's a competence restoration unit based at the Western State grounds. I've also been a U.S. Army reservist. I didn't say how long, but I was there. I'm also pretty active in the community. I'm a member of the Stillicum Historical Museum Association. I'm a board member of Kiwanis of Stillicum, a member of Stillicum Community Charge. And I'm also a board, a committee member with the Public Safety Advisory Committee for the town of Stillicum. So, I've been pretty active. I've volunteered in so many activities within the town and I've also ran before. So, for me, I think it's providing that innovative and new leadership within the town. I feel that the town needs that. It's a great community. It's a small town community. And I believe it needs that new innovative leadership which I provide, I intend to provide as a council member. So, I look forward for your votes. I've been reaching out to members, to members of the community. I've been knocking on doors, talking to a lot of folks within the community, seeking your support. So, I believe I'm the best member to serve in this position too as a council member. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And now we'll go to Andrew Davis for your two-minute introduction.
Thank you. Hello, my name's Andrew Davis. I wanted to introduce myself, so thank you for providing this forum for us. I have family-oriented values. I'm a proud father of two girls. I've grown up in Stillicum since kindergarten. I've coached little one soccer for years and gymnastics for many, many years within the community. I'm not politically tied to either party. I'm more, my ideals will more align with the best ideas that come along for the residents of Stillicum. Shortly after college, I assisted Stillicum Public Works as an intern. I had multiple projects assigned to me, but to highlight a few of them, I digitized Stillicum's power grid and improved the pavement management system. I worked within the Stillicum Public, or I worked well with the Stillicum Public Works staff and would still consider those there my friends. From there, I was hired on as a traffic engineer to Pierce County Planning and Public Works. And from that point forward, I've been serving the public, promoting through multiple positions. I'm now the construction engineering supervisor for Pierce County Planning and Public Works. I'm a licensed professional engineer. My office is in charge of managing many grant-funded and county-funded contracts through the construction process. I've built strong working relationships with many different departments in Pierce County and be able to gather information and help Stillicum achieve their intended goals efficiently and effectively. In closing, everything we do is about people, the people we serve, the people we serve with. I'll use my leadership and my influence as effectively and possible as possible for the betterment of Stillicum and its residents. I appreciate you all taking your time here this evening to get to know me a little bit better and the other candidates. And I'd appreciate your support and vote in August and September.
Thank you. And now we'll move on to the questions, many of which have been submitted by Stillicum residents already. Candidates will have twenty seconds to respond and the candidate speaking first on each question will rotate. Since Cindy Haverkamp gave the first opening statement, we will begin question one with P.K. Thumby. And the question is, does your interest in serving on the town council stem from a personal interest or goal? And why is serving on the council important to you?
Okay, thank you so much for that question. So, for me, public service, I think, is a responsibility, I think, for everyone. And it doesn't matter whether you're in an elected position or a volunteer position or whatever you do within your community. So, for me, it's part of what I feel is my responsibility for public service. I don't, I'm not running because I just feel like I want to run, but I'm running just to take my public service to the next level. I've volunteered in the community for so long in so many activities. And I just feel that at this point in time, being in the town council would be a good place for me to take my public service to that other level. So, it's not just about I'm running because of a particular reason. I'm running because I feel it's part of me, it's part of my responsibility as a citizen in this community. And but having participated in so many volunteer activities, I feel now it's time to take it to the next level of my public service, serving in the town council. And in terms of, okay, thank you so much.
Thank you very much. And next we'll go to Andrew Davis. Same question. Oops, you're muted.
Thank you. What made me want to serve on the town council is essentially to give back. I grew up in this community. I love this community. All of its, all the folks that live here are so great. My daughters are growing up in Stillicum, so I'm invested in this town. I would like to be a part of it and it's cultivating it to keep it growing and flourishing. We have such a beautiful place. We need to, we need people that understand that, how it works, what the heartbeat of Stillicum is and why it's so special to keep it that way. So, that's why I wanted to run is because I appreciate what we have and I understand what we have. And I'd like everybody to under, to be able to enjoy that into the future.
Thank you. And Cindy Haverkamp, same question.
Thanks for the opportunity. And I just want to say Andrew and P.K. made some excellent points there. They mentioned their, the long time they have lived in this town and the things that they have done in that volunteer work. And I would say the same is true for me. I moved here eight years ago. I was a teacher in the Stillicum School District at the time. And I was living in University Place. And every day I would drive by Chambers Creek and I would think that, you know, wow, this place is incredible. I want to get to know this place better. Eventually, I served on the Chambers Clover Creek Watershed Council and learned a little bit more about that waterway and its value and its historical importance. And I also originally come from Pennsylvania where we have a lot of history. And this place really resonates with me and its historical value. I also serve as the External Relations Chair of Schmah. And I just, I want to, like P.K., I want to move my, my public service into a new role. I've done a lot of other things and I'm ready to move up into the town council role. Thank you.
Thank you. And for our second question, we will begin with Andrew Davis. And the question is, based on what you know about Stillicum, what do you see as top priorities for our town council to address and why?
Our town council has a couple of different things coming up on the horizon with the COVID Chambers Bay and development of different developments coming into the town, keeping our green spaces and keeping the unique charm that Stillicum has. I think that that needs to be protected and so the development is one portion of that. And as far as the funding the town with the new proposal, proposal one that's coming in, I think that needs to be very carefully looked at. We can only cut so much funding with inflation. So, that will be another thing that we have to eye to keep level of services where they're at.
Thank you. And Cindy Haverkamp, your response please.
Thanks so much for that question. As I mentioned in my opening remarks, my goal is to promote and protect the things that are important to the people of Stillicum and to honor the historic and scenic values that we have here. I've heard that some issues before the council that are important right now are public safety, creating responsive public services despite, you know, challenges with the economy, increasing an infrastructure that meets the needs of the people specifically around parks and green spaces. And then also, I'm very interested in thoughtful economic and residential growth. I think we need to increase the number of businesses in our town as long as those businesses do fit the historic and scenic values because it's through businesses and taxes that businesses pay that we could really improve some of our revenue challenges. So, those are my thoughts. Thank you for asking.
Thank you. And P.K. Thumby, your response please.
I think there are three, there are three issues of most importance to me as we go on, as we go forward as a town. One is the COVID Chambers Bay development. I think we need to get that project going so that we can make better use of that paper mill site that has been staying idle for a long time. I think we really need to continue with our process and make sure that project gets going. The second is public safety. I think public safety is a huge issue for me. It's one of my top priority. We need to keep the town as safe as it is. Currently, we're at eleven public safety offices. I serve at the Public Safety Advisory Committee. And we get the report that yes, we're a safe town, but I think we can make it better by adding at least one public safety officer. And I think the initiative that we have to vote on, I'm hoping that we're going to accept so that we can be able to get at least one more public safety officer in town because we want to keep the town as safe as it is. And then the third one is community involvement. I've been pretty vocal about making sure that we keep, we involve the public.
Thank you. Your time is up. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. And our next question, for our next question, we will begin with Cindy Haverkamp. And the question is, what are key issues with land use planning in Stillicum and the surrounding area? And how will you deal with those issues?
Thanks for that great question. I think it's important for us to consider the environmental values that we have in our community. For example, it is a beautiful place to live. There's, there's the beautiful sound. There's plenty of tree canopy cover. There could be more. But we also have to be sensitive to people's needs and issues around views. I've heard that quite a bit. So, what's important here in our town is creating a healthy place for people to thrive in and a place where people can live, work, and play successfully and happily. So, my goal on if I got elected was, would be to continue doing those things which will improve the health of our residents, whether that be through tree canopy cover increases or through land, smart and smart land use decisions that reflect the historic and scenic values of our town. I am here to listen to what people need in that area. Thank you.
Thank you. And P.K. Thumby, your response please.
I think for me, for us to have a balanced approach, I think we've really maintained that balanced approach. And I think we need to keep it that way in terms of making sure that we maintain our green areas within town because that's what makes our community beautiful and people wanting to come here. And then two, making sure that we develop areas that have not been developed because we don't have a huge commercial district, so we rely more on property taxes. So, for the undeveloped areas, we really need to make sure they're developed so that we can get resources to provide the basic services that we need in this town. So, let's keep up with smart planning for our town and make sure that we don't overgrow where we can't meet the challenges of our population in our town and making sure that we maintain that small town feeling that make people love this community. So, that balanced approach is very key to me. Thank you.
Thank you. And Andrew Davis, your response.
I have experience with development and building through my profession. And yes, it does take a balanced approach. We have one of the oldest incorporated town and so many responsibilities, I think, come with that, protecting and restoring our critical areas and natural resources. We want to keep our green spaces, the other two candidates have mentioned. We have beautiful beaches and wildlife that needs to be protected. We want to protect our water quality. So, along with development, we need to take those considerations into account. And when development comes our way, that needs to be balanced with the, their impacts, not only to people but to our natural spaces. So, that's what I would be looking at as a holistic picture that keeps Stillicum vibrant and it keeps Stillicum moving forward in a good, sustainable direction.
Hey, and thank you very much, Andrew. And just as a reminder to the audience, if you have questions, please text them to 425-765-5388. Thank you. And we have one in just right now. And we will start with P.K. Thumby on this. What changes in town leadership do you seek and why is it important to the residents?
I think for me, a main change that I would advocate for is to have more community involvement. This is a great town, a small town that I think everybody can get involved if the town can provide leadership for that. I think we've made progress in the last four, five years in terms of the mayor putting up two two major public committees of which I serve in one of them, the Public Safety Advisory Committee. This is where we give community members a forum just to raise issues and to create that bridge between them and the town council. I also think the town can also move to the next level of community engagement. Like, I don't see why in three or four months we can't be having community council members in the community, in the neighborhoods. If the people cannot come to the council, the council can also go to the community because I think the council has been experiencing that problem where you see people really don't want to attend council meetings. I think the city, the town council can hold meetings in neighborhoods. So, community involvement is very major for me.
Thank you. Your time is up. Thank you. And now Cindy Haverkamp.
Oh, I'm sorry. Fine.
It's Andrew's turn. Andrew Davis.
Oh, thank you. Could you repeat that question, please? You're on mute, Liz, sorry.
Oops. Can you hear me?
Again.
Okay. What changes in town leadership do you seek and why is it important to the residents?
Leadership of the town is first and foremost for the people. So, listening is a large part of that and understanding what is important to Stillicum. I think that I have a good understanding of what is important by being here and living here and having so many friends and family that live in Stillicum. So, I understand what that is, but I also am open and willing to listen to many different perspectives. The more perspectives you have, the better decisions you can make. So, I offer and welcome anybody to come up and lend me their opinions and ideas. And I'd be happy to take Stillicum in the direction that everybody wants or in the general direction that we can make the most people happy as opposed to, you know, any other direction. Thank you.
Thank you. And now it's Cindy Haverkamp's turn.
Thank you, Liz. As a representative on the Stillicum Parks and Environment Advisory Committee for the last few years, I just want to say many thanks to the current leadership of the town. I feel like the leaders of our town are doing an exceptional job, especially the folks in Planning and Public Works. And I just, also our public safety, I think they really deserve kudos for the work that they're doing. I think one thing that we can improve on is improving our connections to other small towns and cities. I also serve on something called the Pierce Climate Conversation. And this is a collection of towns and cities and elected officials from around our area and around the South Sound who meet regularly to discuss changes to the Comprehensive Plan and to the Growth Management Act and to prepare themselves for the future in that area. So, I think one thing that would really help is for us to deepen our connections with other small towns and cities like ourselves. Thank you.
Thank you. And in our next question, we'll begin with Andrew Davis. And the question is, what are your short and long-range plans to address needs for affordable housing?
So, affordable housing in Stillicum is a challenge just because it is such a sought-after area. The prices in Stillicum have increased immensely over the last twenty years. They're hard to keep up with. As far as as trying to keep costs down, having different programs that allow for assistance for housing, things like that, we could look into that for either state or county county funds for additional monies for for folks to live and either pay a mortgage or rent or anything like that because we want this, this community to be based around families.
Thank you. And Cindy Haverkamp, your response please.
Thanks, Liz. There are a lot of great ideas in our state legislature right now about improving affordable housing. And one thing that I've heard a lot is improving permitting processes to make it easier for different types of housing to be built. I know that all of the towns in Washington, I believe, need to find out ways to improve their affordable housing availability. And one thing I've heard about that seems to work is increasing the number of accessory dwelling units on properties. Now, I know there are challenges with, challenges around that with septic and making sure that there's enough water and septic for every unit. But there are, there are things that we could do that would help with that. And it's important that we do consider it because although we don't see a lot of homelessness in our town, there are certainly people who are struggling financially and need the help. So, thank you.
Thank you. And P.K. Thumby, your response please.
Okay, so affordable housing is not, I don't think it's a very major issue when it comes to Stillicum. It's a small town, so we don't have a lot of issues that would, whatever for that. But I think the town has done a few issues when it comes to like assessing dwelling housing units where we can reduce the permitting process and make it a little bit easier for people to subdivide their houses and allow low-cost folks to live with them. I think the town also helps with rent assistance. That has gone a long way in helping a lot of folks that fall behind when it comes to pay their rent. I think there are also other ways that we can partner with communities around us and see how we can improve on that. But in terms of that, that would really be an issue if we have like a homeless problem or something like that. But I think there are ways we can really improve on how we can make a little bit easier for people who would want to have housing in the town of Stillicum. Thank you.
Thank you. And for our next question, we'll begin with Cindy Haverkamp. And the question is, the town of Stillicum has had to reduce expenditures due to a budget deficit. And the question is, the town of Silicon has had to reduce expenditures due to a budget deficit. What is the cause of this deficit and what additional measures would you recommend to address this imbalance of income and revenue?
Thanks for that question, Liz. I believe that a lot of people in our town have questions about why we've lost our farmer's market. They have questions about why we've had a reduction in services for things like a resource officer in the school district. Unfortunately, the funding landscape across the United States is challenging right now. And federal funding has decreased, even state funding has decreased. So all of these things make it more important for small cities and towns to work together to figure out solutions, possibly collectively apply for grants. They're probably going to need to look at philanthropic sources at this point. So there are solutions to come. And as a council member, I will definitely work hard to find those solutions and to work with other small cities and towns to find solutions. Thank you.
Thank you. And PK Thumby, your response, please.
So for me, I think it gets down to what you receive and what you spend. And I think if we do that for families, I don't see why a government cannot do that. So with the town of Silicon, I think we've been, for a matter of years, I think we've been spending more than we've been bringing in. And I think what we need to do is to find ways of bringing in more money. So that we can get back to funding some of those programs that we, people really like the town of Silicon. So I think, I think as a town council, I think people need to bring in ideas on how we can improve tax revenue. We don't have a lot of, a huge commercial district, so all we rely on is property taxes. So if we can be able to come with program, encourage development of areas that have not been developed, so that we can have more resources to be able to provide for some of those programs that have been cut in the last few years. So for me, it's all about finding more resources through taxes, so encouraging businesses.
Your time is up. Thank you. And we'll move on to Andrew Davis.
Thank you. I think that it is dual pronged. We will definitely have to find other funding sources. So looking for grants, as Cindy was saying, I think is a very viable option. Different sources of funding, how that comes down from other, other sources outside of the mainstream of taxes. Nobody wants more taxes, but there may be, there may be grounds for some of that. I think the, the aspect of inflation has caused hardship with the town's funding. Based on the fact that we are, majority of our income is based on homeowner, on property taxes, which only increase approximately 1% per year. So the funding increases from the property taxes are not keeping up with inflation. So that's a, that's a hard one to, to cover year after year after year after year. And, and that's partly where the town administration has worked really hard to keep that there.
Thank you. Thank you. And moving on to our next question. And for this, we will start with PK Thumby. Can you offer any recommendations to increase or improve public safety in the town of Silicon?
Okay, okay. So I'm in the Public Safety Advisor Committee. And I think we get the crime statistics every three months or so. And I can say to the community that we're one of the most safest cities, safest towns around. But I think we can make some improvement, like addition of public safety officers. At least, I think there's a measure in the works right now to at least get one more public safety officer. Because I think we've been getting all the reports from the chief that if you have a call out or something like that, it becomes a huge problem for them to try and manage calls that might come up for their attention. So making sure we add that one before we even get to the ideal situation of 13 or 14 public safety officers that we ideally need as a town to make sure that we maintain that safety, safety record. So that will be huge for me, just making sure we can add at least one or two in the next four or five years. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And moving on to Andrew Davis.
So adding for public, public safety, I think that we can, we would rely on some of the social media. If there's different things that you see, people can post for, you know, people to be vigilant and stay vigilant. I think that is always important. We do have the blessing of living in a safe place and environment. And, and I really cherish that for, you know, I have two young girls, 11 and three. And, and that's, that's important to me and keeping that, that is important to me. And I think important to everybody in Silicon, that's one of the things we pride ourselves on. So yeah, increasing, if there is a way to minimize costs and increase a public safety officer, that'd be great. If Prop One is the way we have to do that, that may be one of the benefits of that proposal. Thank you.
Thank you. And Cindy Haverkamp.
Thanks, Liz, and great answers, everyone else. I would just say that in my work, which I do a lot of work around wildfire preparedness in my day job. And one thing that I repeat and I hear repeated often is that the best way to improve public safety is to take some responsibility on ourselves as residents. So some things we can do is as a community, there could be a community emergency response team developed. And part of that work is getting to know your neighbors, understanding the lay of your neighborhood, organizing neighborhood safety efforts. Installing something as simple as installing a security system or making sure that your fire alarms work. There's a lot of things we can do individually to increase the public safety ourselves. And also to make it safer for our neighbors. We definitely need to check on our neighbors. And in order to check on our neighbors, we need to be a friendly face that they have met before. So it is not the right time when the emergency strikes. It is the time today to get out and shake hands, get to know people. And together we can create more safety ourselves. Thank you.
Thank you. And the next question, we'll begin with Andrew Davis. And the question is, what measures or projects could the town of Silicon adopt to enable our town to be more resilient in the face of changes in our climate, which are projected to increase in the coming years?
Are, that are projected to increase? Well, to be more resilient, you have to be running lean. So, and, and keeping some type of positive balance each, each year, each, each month as you're, as you're progressing. So that, that would help us making sure that we are running as efficiently as possible. And streamlining what we can to make this, this town government run like a business as much as possible. Keeping the level of service to where folks can get taken care of quickly and promptly, but not having additional waste. So the public works staff that I've been involved with have been very good, very responsive. I really appreciate their, their work. And I would look to continue that, but just make sure that we are running as, as lean as possible and keeping what we can in reserve for future.
Thank you. Cindy Haverkamp, please.
Thank you. The most important thing we can do to prepare for climate change and extreme weather impacts is to plan. I believe our town could do a lot more to plan for a hotter, drier future. So some things that we could work on would be developing tree canopy goals. Making sure that we have plans in place for increased wildfire smoke that may come our way. Wildfire smoke has a lot of health impacts. And just teaching people what those health impacts are would also be a great idea. And one of the most important things in our town specifically is considering sea level rise. We have a lot of very important historical assets. Which if we look at other parts of the country where they are planning for their historical assets to be protected from sea level rise, we could learn a lot. So those are some thoughts I have on climate change impacts and preparing for them. Thanks for asking.
Thank you. And PK Thumby, your response, please.
This goes back to smart planning. And the first thing is to make sure that we maintain our green areas. That's why people want to move here. It's a beautiful place. We've got trees. The feral marsh is wonderful. Making sure we maintain those green areas that are part of our planet. And then two, we must work on community preparedness, making sure the community is prepared, making sure the town is prepared, just in case there's a crisis, we can be able to respond to it. And then of course, making sure there's a good environmental assessment on any development going forward. I think in that, we can be able to make sure we maintain our environment and make sure we're safe as a community. Thank you.
Thank you. And our next question, we'll begin with Cindy Haverkamp. Do you favor or oppose any changes to the town code that might increase tree density? Either only on town owned property or on both public and private property? And what changes would you recommend?
This is a great question. There are many communities around us who are developing tree canopy goals. They are adding trees. They're working with the Tacoma Tree Foundation, making trees, putting trees in all kinds of places, whether they be in the public right of way or through adopted tree programs for private residences. No matter what we decide as a community, it has to be a balanced approach. There are plenty of important views in our community that people wish to preserve. And on private property, it shouldn't be the council's role to force people to plant trees that block their view, for example. So together with the community, we need to have a great conversation where we listen to each other, where we talk about the health benefits of trees, where we do create a tree canopy goal, but we do not create a goal that is unreasonable or that is not something that we can meet. So a reasonable, balanced tree canopy cover goal is something that I will definitely work on.
Thank you. And PK Thumby, your response, please.
I think I'm going back to smart planning, where we make sure that our green areas are protected and maintained. A balanced approach is very, is very good at this point. Making sure that maintain those green areas so that we can have trees in our community, the greens and all that. But also making sure that areas that have not been developed, we can be able to do that. Because we need that, those resources to get back to our basic functions as a town. So I would not, as of now, I don't think there's a huge challenge for that within the town. Just going back to the basics, smart planning.
Okay, and thank you. And Andrew Davis.
Thank you, Liz. And I'm sorry, I misheard your last question, apparently. But as, as far as the tree canopy goal, yes, it is, it is good to have a balanced approach. Between whether it be views or damaging infrastructure, trees, trees have to be carefully placed. They can't, they can't just be put in anywhere. Or you have to select the proper, proper trees or proper vegetation for the area that it's going in. I mean, there are root impacts and things like that that have to be, that have, you have to think about for 20, 30 years into the future that could damage, you know, infrastructure. So those types of considerations I would think about as, as along with having those, you know, balanced goals in the future to help us maintain, you know, our shaded environment and greenery around the town. Thank you.
Thank you. And this question, this next question is an audience question that was just texted in. And we'll start with PK Thumby for this. How do you think the council should address residents' concerns about local law enforcement's response to requests to support federal law enforcement?
In relation to what? Because I think when it comes to the, the town law enforcement, I think the town of public safety officers can be able to take care of the town. Unless we would request for any help from our neighbors or the federal government, I don't see how that is an issue at all in the town. But as far as I know, the town is capable of taking, making sure it responds to the calls within the town. If we need help, we can talk to our neighboring communities. And of course, if there's a major issue, like a federal involved issue, like drugs or anything like that, I think we'd open our doors for that. Because all we want is to make our community safe. Thank you.
Thank you. And Andrew Davis, your response, please.
So keeping our communities safe from somebody that is not doing a lawful activity, I think is the largest, the largest thing to focus on there. And, and our public safety officers, they would be, from my perspective on the town council, we would rely on them, you know, first and foremost. If there is something that comes up that requires some type of federal involvement that, you know, at this point I'm unaware of, I would take those considerations and, and work with the other council members and elected leaders and listen to the, the folks of Silicon to come up with the best, the best outcome or the best, the best play there. Thank you.
Thank you. And Cindy Haverkamp.
Thank you, Liz. I believe our public safety force is pretty small. I believe PK mentioned there are 11 officers at this point. And we already had to pull back our school resource officer last year from his role at the school. So I don't feel like our public safety folks have the time or the energy to be doing work outside of protecting the citizens of Silicon. I do know that there are mutual aid agreements where we may get called in to assist with certain cases or activities outside of the town's borders. And if, if we have capacity to do that, we should do that. But I, I think that we, we can, like Andrew suggested, lean on our public safety officials to make determinations about whether that is necessary, whether that makes sense, and whether they can continue to protect our own residents while also doing these additional activities. Thank you.
Thank you. And our next question, we'll begin with Andrew Davis. And the question is, can you recommend any changes to the Silicon Municipal Code that might encourage more economic development and encourage successful businesses to stay and new ones to locate to Silicon?
The, Silicon is a beautiful place. And figuring out a smart way to make it a destination or something where people want to come and spend money is a double edged sword. So yes, you would, we would want to promote business. We want them to come. We want business to come in here and thrive. And, and I think there's a number of different businesses that have come into Silicon. And fortunately for us all, they're, they are doing very well. So I, I appreciate somebody who is gonna take that and streamlining permitting for them or giving them different incentives to relocate here, I think could be a very good and viable way to bring new life and new business into Silicon. And, and keeping them as a revenue source as well and as a dual benefit.
Thank you. And now Cindy Haverkamp.
I really like the idea of incentives. And I just want to echo what Andrew just said about that. One idea that I had recently was to provide incentives to rent landlords to increase the number of businesses that we can accept in our town. I know one challenge for businesses is that rents become very expensive. And of course landlords have their reasons for raising rent. They also have to make a living. But if there was a way through grants or some other solution to reduce those rents so that businesses could afford to stay here and make a profit, that would be a suggestion. Another thing again would be, we don't have a lot of room to grow the downtown core. But if there were opportunities to streamline business applications or to, just to make it easier for a building, a historic building, for example, to be turned into some sort of business that reflects our values, that would be great. Thank you.
Thank you. And PK, your response, please.
So for me, I would uh, I would look on the codes that relates to taxation and regulation. If we can be able to check on taxation and make sure we don't tax businesses so much as they move in the into the town and making sure that we do not regulate businesses as much so that we can encourage them to grow. Incentives is also an issue, and I think public safety is a huge issue too, because businesses want to move in a place that they feel safe uh to to run their businesses. So I would check on taxation and regulation. And of course incentives that we can be able to pull businesses into the town. Thank you.
Thank you. And it's time to go to closing statements. And we'll go in reverse order of the opening statements for one minute each. And so a closing statement, uh, we'll, we'll begin with Andrew Davis for one minute, please.
Thank you again for uh allowing us here and to connect with some of the voters, uh, engage with the the folks of Silicon. Uh, I look forward to getting to know better some of the folks in Silicon that I don't already know. Uh, so I'm, I'm hopeful that that happens uh as as we move forward through this process. My experience in construction, uh, means and methods, as well as managing contractors, will be a great asset to Silicon. When it comes to the project on Martin Street, uh, the developments that are going around town, the chambers, uh, COVID Chambers Bay, and and then any, any new developments coming in into the town uh throughout the future. I love this town, its people. Um, it, I've been being part of such a wonderful community. I intend to cultivate and continue that for long into the future. I appreciate you all spending your time here with us tonight, and I hope to have your support in August and November, and thank you very much. I hope you all have a good evening.
Thank you. And now Paul PK Thumby, please.
Okay, as I said earlier, I've lived in the community for eight years. I've remained active, volunteering in so many activities. I'm a member of so many community organizations. As for my career, I'm a former member of the US Army Reserves. I work as an institution counselor with the PHA BHTC Silicon Unit. Uh, as for my education background, I have a master's in theology and my PhD program is in progress. As I, and for me, I feel like it's time to give back to the community. I moved to this country a few years ago. Uh, it's time to give back to the community and I've been active and I want to take my public service to the next level. Uh, I look forward to knocking to as many doors, to talking to as many people and making sure that I earn your trust and vote in August and November. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And Cindy Haverkamp, your statement, please.
Thank you, Liz, and thank you to the League of Women Voters for having us all here tonight and giving us this opportunity to answer the community's questions. I'm very happy to be here and very grateful to all of the residents who attended this evening. Um, as I mentioned in my uh beginning statement, I am a proven leader in this town. I have worked on numerous um projects, including the Chambers Clover Creek Watershed Council. I've served as secretary and vice chair of that organization. I have elected experience as a uh board chair, vice board chair on the Pierce Conservation District Board. Um, my work has been around uh public servants, service from the beginning as a teacher, as a parks planner for Pierce County Parks, um, as a lecturer at the University of Washington on health topics and currently as a health promotion coordinator for the Health Department. So I am here to work for the citizens of Silicon and to give all of that background up to the council as it needs it. Um, I offer a balanced perspective. I have a lot of patience and tenacity. I love collaboration. So I'll be reaching out to you at your doors and knocking around town. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. And thank you all of all three candidates for participating in this forum tonight. To the audience for watching and to our timer, question taker and Zoom master. The candidates for Silicon City Council Position Two are in ballot order Cindy Haverkamp, Paul PK Thumby and Andrew Davis. Two of these candidates will move on to the general election in November. Be sure to vote on or before Tuesday, August fifth. Before you do, also check out the League of Women Voters online voter, online voters guide at votefor11.org and go to votewa.org to check out your voter registration or to register if you are not yet registered. Both sites identify ballot issues and candidate information specific to your own voting precinct. We encourage everyone to use those as a resource in addition to the standard voters guide. You will find our other candidate forums and a link to this recording on our website at LWVTPC. That stands for League of Women Voters Tacoma Pierce County. LWVTPC.org, elections, voting. Thank you again for watching and have a wonderful evening.